There we go. The Jacksonville, City of Jacksonville A and P Commission now coming to order, June eighteenth, five thirty. Let us pray. Father in heaven, we thank you once again for bringing us together. Put your arms around us, heavenly Father. Give us understanding, Lord. Give us wisdom and knowledge to help us make a decision for the city of Jacksonville, all its residents. In the name of Jesus, we ask and pray, Lord. Amen. Join me in the pledge.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Secretary of Department of Commerce, please.
Commissioner Bush.
Here.
Commissioner Ray Patel.
Yeah.
Commissioner Andy Patel.
Here.
Commissioner Hurley. Commissioner Sundomeyer. Councilmember Collins.
Here.
Two absences.
We do have a call. You all read the minutes on number three on agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve? The minutes is read.
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, negative. Next on the agenda is number four, financial report.
Okay, on the financial report, on the statement of revenues and expenditures, total revenues is two hundred and sixty-eight thousand and twenty-eight dollars. And this is what the period ending May thirty-first. And the total expenditures is three hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three, which shows that expenditures exceed revenues by forty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars. I wanted to make a note that our hotel motel tax is down a little over eight thousand dollars compared to this point from last year. And our prepared foods is down thirteen thousand and fifty dollars compared to this time last year. The next page. Oh, I skipped one. The balance sheet, I skipped the balance sheet, sorry. It has total assets of nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. Our accounts payable is a hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars, which shows that the undescended is eight hundred and nineteen thousand and fifty-three dollars. And then if you go to the back page of the financial report, the gross revenues that were reported for hotel motel for the month of April was a hundred and twenty-five thousand and ninety-eight dollars. And that compared to this point last year is down twenty-one percent. And if you compare this April to April of last year, it's down thirty-nine percent. On the prepared foods, they reported three million, one hundred, sorry, three million, one thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars. That's down eleven percent for the year-to-date comparison and it's down eighteen percent for the monthly comparison. The overall revenues was reported at three million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, not six hundred and fifteen. That's down twelve percent for the year comparison and down nineteen percent for the monthly comparison. And that's all I have.
All right. I have a really quick question to you. So showing that negative expenditure, how are we compensate that?
That sheet just shows the amount of revenue that has come in and the expenditures that have gone in, gone out for this current year. We have cash in the bank carried over from previous years that will cover that excess expenditures over revenues.
So we did not have to break any ceilings or anything?
No, 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 we still have cash on it.
Very good.
Good, thank you.
Good. Another question. Do I have a motion to accept the financial report?
So many.
Do I have a second? All in favor say aye. All opposed, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Alrighty. In your packet, you saw the quarterly report, the second quarter report from the Chamber of Commerce. Anybody have any questions on that? Do I have a motion to approve it? This is a report that we asked them, when we funded them, to write, send a report at each quarter.
Did we receive that?
Yes, it's in the package, it's back there. Yes.
Look at that.
It's right before the funding request.
Page twenty-six.
Page ten. Is that right? No, that's not. Go ahead.
Yeah, second quarter of twenty-twenty, yes, you had talking about page number twenty-six.
Alright.
This is just even what they've been adding, they're doing it, so, yeah, this is, I think this should, yeah, you add that to a part of the last rest of it.
Do I have a motion to accept that?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Go ahead.
All in favor say aye. All opposed, thank you. At this time, we are going to old business. I don't think we have an old business to state at this time. We're going to new business. New business is a funding request from the, uh, site master plan for Splashpad. Mr. House, thirty-five hundred dollars.
Can you just tell us what he said because I was not here in the last meeting?
We're in the process of working on a grant, which was discussed at the last meeting. And one of the stipulations is you gotta have a detailed site plan and a master plan and a site map of the proposed splash pad. WD&amp;D, I've been in contact with them, they've actually started working on it, just doing some preliminary stuff. He's the same architect firm that worked on it the last time when we had the whole master plan done on the lazy river and all that, five years ago. And, I mean, this thirty-five hundred is just straight from what he said it would cost us to get the detailed site plan and, you know, the master plan.
So that's a civil work, right, when you say the site plan, that's a civil work? Civil engineer gonna stretch that?
It's plans and specs is what it basically boils down to.
But what are we trying to do at this question?
To create, to build a splash pad. So we'll increase capacity without increasing staff tremendously because you don't have to put a lot of work on splash pad.
But the same place, we want to.
Same place will just be extended.
Right. I'll make a motion to approve that, please.
Alright, and then discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all, thank you. Due to the, uh, surrounding situations, our agenda was very short and we didn't have much time, so I think, uh, overall, the A and P commissions have been doing well through the last three months that we've been going through the pandemic, so I think we're doing well. And I think the city itself is doing well. So I hope that, I'm glad that you all came today and I'm glad that you all came in. We got an announcement for the secretary.
Then I have to say something.
Okay. Go ahead, Joe, go ahead and do it.
Regarding the financial situation, see, I'm a hotelier. We've been down, restaurants been down, when we met, or when the last commissioner meeting happened in February, we never had any clue that where are we gonna go from March, April, May, and we are in June, hotels occupancy is not improved. So I'm gonna tell the financial chair that you will not see much collection from the hotel side. I think restaurants will come back more than before. But looking at the whole year financial, I guess, whatever we budgeted last year, or whatever fund we would like to do going forward, we have to be very conservative because we are not gonna have any closure to what we collected in two thousand and nineteen. I wanted to tell you that, so, because we collect all the taxes from the restaurants and the hotels. And we're gonna be slow space to recover. It's gonna take year or two to get back to normal. So just wanted to make sure that whenever we approve, be very careful going forward for twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you for pushing, Patel, thank you. Madam Secretary.
Big Bang on the range will be held on Saturday, July fourth, at the Jacksonville shooting range from six, from five o'clock PM to nine o'clock PM. The event will feature live music, food trucks, a kids' zone, and fireworks. Admission is free. ADH COVID-nineteen guidelines will be enforced.
Alright, thank you. I'm glad to hear that we're gonna have a big bang on the range. I'm glad to hear that so many things have been in council. Thank you. We're gonna have a crowd. Does anything else need to be brought to our attention? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, so adjourned. Thank y'all, appreciate you coming. Alright. Mark, would you open the floor, please?
Most holy fathers, we bow, we bow, praise you and honor you.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Okay, roll call. Please remember to mute your phones when you're not speaking.
Councilmember Bowden. Councilmember Sykes.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sansing.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mashburn. Councilmember Trailer.
Here.
Councilmember Twitty.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Collins.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm here.
I have two absences.
Okay, thank you. So we have the presentation of the minutes from the May twenty-first meeting and approval of the minutes from the April twenty-third. Do I hear anything about the minutes?
So, take a motion to move, say.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to request that the presentation of the previous minutes try to be a received in a little more timely manner. It's been a month since the meeting and coming in after four o'clock today was a long time.
So noted. Okay, so, do I hear anything on the consent agenda?
Who does the consent agenda on his attorney?
Does it have a motion and second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, saying nay. Alright, since the used car committee hadn't been and customer measurements not with us, so we're gonna skip over that. Okay. We're pulling the ordinance on the closing of Six Hour Road temporarily to make some corrections to it. Especially our water and sewer easements, so we may be reconvene at another time to approve it. Now, the public meeting, right, open the public meeting. Susan?
Yes, sir, open the public meeting.
Okay.
Table it.
Do I have to table the public meeting? Because we have it.
Table the ordinance until, and that way we don't have to re-advertise it.
But we can do the public meeting right now.
Well, no, you'll open up the, if you want to, yes.
Okay, let's get it behind us.
Yes, that part.
And we're gonna fix it and do it, so, okay. Six oh three, open the public meeting for comments. Have you received any comments?
No, sir, no, sir.
Is this on, is this on? Is this on the closing and vacating?
Yes, yes. We have to have a public meeting. Now, we can discuss the ordinance a minute before, but we gotta do the public meeting for public comments. Any comment?
So, alright, my name is Terry Sansing. And my public comment on this is Sig has recently received two very large contracts with the US government. They were very working, working hard for our government and the city. And I think we should do what we need to to facilitate them in any way possible. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, I most obedient to six oh four. And now we're gonna talk about the ordinance a little bit. Tommy, you will come up and say something about it. And we're gonna table it for this reason. The reason is that we didn't put in the writing portion of it the water and sewer easements. That needs to be there for we approve it, just to make sure it's done. So that was, you know, we kinda did this in a hurry and it didn't quite get done. So we're gonna, we're gonna call a special session later next week to do this.
Well, the way that, the way we work is the legal description of closing the road is we'd simply close the road, we didn't close the right way. So that shouldn't affect any easements or utilities involved.
Jimmy, you're the one that brought that up.
Yeah, I just wanted the stipulation that we maintain some easements.
The city still owns all the property, so you've got an easement over the whole thing. You've had a contract with Sig, Sig to buy, but you still own it all, I think.
Mike, if you would, help me to understand. I think eventually it comes Sig at a certain period of time of a length of a lease, like that?
Right, right. Finance is satisfied.
Yes.
Absolute property of Six Hour, that's over a period of two years left, I'm not sure how.
So, so Sig will continue to own all the properties for some period of time, so.
But what about after that period of time?
Well, then it needs to be dealt with. But in the meantime, Sig and their, some of the plans they have for expansion, some of these utilities will probably end up being relocated.
Can we get a special, I'm asking, can we get a special letter from them saying we're gonna keep ours water and sewer easements at a later date? I want to do things wrong.
Well, it's not a problem, and I think it's covered in Mike's memorandum to all of you that it would be dealt with. When we turn this over, that'll be part of the closing of the land to Sig, they'll have to be, you, the city council, will have to sign the deed. You'll have to authorize the mayor to sign the deed, turn it over.
Eventually.
Eventually. And so all of this, all of this can be dealt with when you do that.
I'm not familiar with terms of the lease.
Mr. Mayor, and the proper way to do this, I think, is that we need to table, go ahead and table the ordinance, I meant the ordinance. And then y'all, whatever you're gonna do to it, you do that way and do it, bring it back to the council, is that right?
That's what I'm thinking of.
That's why you're tabling it.
That would be better, but we're talking next week, okay?
I don't think the ordinance matters because it doesn't impact, it just impacts the road, not the utilities.
Exactly.
You guys still own all of the land.
This has been a unique situation where final flat didn't dedicate a roadway to start with, so it's been unique from day one. That's not normal. Of all the parcel of land, complete the road, and there was a dedicated road when it was final flat. Like we normally do a subdivision, since we was the owners of the land and the roadway and the utilities. It's kinda, it's been different.
It was different. The road was there before the property was flat.
Okay, so, what do we say? Do you want that clause in here or not? Do you want me to rewrite this ordinance?
Well, again, I'm not familiar with how the lease reads to say where will be a time of a closing. I don't, I don't know, I can't speak on that because I'm not familiar enough with the lease.
So far as the Chamber Foundation is concerned, that is the record title on our, we say as clearly as I knew I'd say it, that we confirm the nature and location of public utility easements as necessary for future expansion, as shown on the document. Everybody here wants the same method, I know.
That's true.
And I think we're splitting hairs maybe a little bit. But so far as the Chamber Foundation is concerned, if and when the city needs an easement for a particular purpose with concentration on Six Hour at that point, it'll be done.
They're there now. Water Service Department, both approximately, won't be sure that they got an easement, and I just wanna bring them forth tonight.
What's gonna happen is Six Hour, and there's no reason to believe they won't, exercise their right, their contract, then they'll own the whole fund. Generally, the city does not have utilities on private property.
Correct.
This will be private property, and so the utility companies, water, sewer, would no longer be, they won't take care of it. It won't be theirs, it'll be Six Hour.
They, now, we'll have to have an easement because they feed other things, they feed the shrink department back in here, the water service does. But anyhow, we will need a recent easement eventually.
Well, that, I don't think that'll be a problem. I mean, all that can be handled at closing.
I got it.
Because the city owns everything and it's gonna continue.
I get it, I said, I'm not familiar with that lease agreement, I didn't, I don't know.
Okay.
Are they wanting to get started on something right away?
Yes, sir. They, they've got in their contracts with the Department of Defense, there are certain safe zones that are required from the, where they work with the, what they call propel. And these safe zones are two hundred and eight feet, and those expand out over these streets. So there is some concern for the public having access to the street in this safe zone and their handling propel. And that's, that's the main purpose for all of this, is to protect the public.
Yeah, so I mean, we could just close the street and let Sig.
That's what this, that's what this ordinance does, is just close the streets.
And you still have control of water line.
All we're doing is closing the street.
It's all the ordinance does.
Yeah, that's all the ordinance is doing, is closing the street.
It doesn't abandon the right of way because there's not a right of way there.
There was a dedicated right of way.
There's never a dedicated right of way.
Because we owned it all.
You're not abandoning anything.
Okay.
It's a little different. We, city don't normally build subdivisions, that's one of the few.
You okay with this?
Yeah, Jimmy's okay with it. That was the only thing.
Right.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm happy to have this for water and wastewater, because they, they came to me and requested.
So we still have our easement.
In right, we need, well, we're the owners of everything.
At this time.
Yes, we're the owners of the road shield.
Yes, you are.
You just closing passageway of other.
As I understand, we're not dedicating it at this time, we're just closing the street, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So the easement stayed in fact.
Yeah.
Well, it never was dedicated, so it's kinda unique, yes, but.
We're not dedicating it to Sig right now.
Right.
We're just closing the street. That's what the ordinance does, so.
Yes.
I have another question. Our ability to work on any of the items in the easement would have to have a cooperative agreement with Sig to make sure that we are not in the danger area while they're building propel. Okay.
And we're gonna continue to let the street department, Sig's gonna continue to let the street department have access, but Sig is building a whole new access for the street department as part of the group. But the street department will continue to have the access, it's coordinated with Sig.
Make the motion to ordinance number sixteen thirty-three, first reading.
Second.
Second.
Alright, you got a motion, second, any further discussion? Alright, seeing none, roll call.
Mitchner, excuse me. Councilmember Sykes.
Yes.
Councilmember Sansing.
Yes.
Councilmember Ray.
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer.
Yes.
Councilmember Twitty. Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Ordinance number sixteen thirty-three, it orders closing and vacating a portion of Swift and Six Hour Drives and for related purposes.
Okay, I entertain a motion to suspend Earls and put it on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, any more discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Sykes.
Yes.
Councilmember Sansing.
Aye.
Councilmember Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Trailer.
Aye.
Councilmember Twitty.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Okay, I entertain a motion, put, suspend Earls and pass the final reading.
So moved.
Okay, got a motion, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Sykes.
Aye.
Councilmember Sansing.
Aye.
Councilmember Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Trailer.
Aye.
Councilmember Twitty.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
I entertain a motion to approve and adopt ordinance sixteen thirty-three.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Sykes.
Aye.
Councilmember Sansing.
Aye.
Councilmember Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Trailer.
Aye.
Councilmember Twitty.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Okay, we have adopted sixteen thirty-three, and I entertain a motion to suspend Earls and pass the emergency clause.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, any discussion of emergency clause? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Sykes. Councilmember Sansing.
Aye.
Councilmember Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Trailer.
Aye.
Councilmember Twitty.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Glad we got that behind us. Thank you, Tommy.
Thank you.
My.
Thank you all.
Our next two items, I'll put those under, Mike, you and I will meet on those and discuss those. There's a couple of things we need to work out on that. Yeah, pardon me, so.
Okay, I just need to reach twice.
Okay. Oh, yeah, 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 okay. So I'm pulling the next two items, they both pertain to each other, and Mike and I will stress those at later date and see if there's gonna be some revisions. Okay, an update from Interim Chief Hibbs. Can you hear? Okay, there he is.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
I've got a couple of policy updates that a lot of you have been asking about, what have been going on in the country. I know that your constituents and citizens have been calling and asking questions, so I've already answered a bunch of them, but any of these things that y'all have, we would be happy to answer, because there's a lot of misinformation out there. On the first one, on response to resistance, I said this earlier, but we defined what a bastard neck restraint is in our policy in the Choco. Neck restraint can handle anything that restricts blood flow or oxygen to the head from the neck. We already, just so y'all know, we do not teach neck restraints of any sort. They are not one of the tactics that our officers have. So we added this into this policy and it changes nothing that we do. We already do not do it. So it's not gonna affect our use as a force because many of the farmers around the country don't touch the neck, do they? Alright, so we added, um, on page five, what I sent you guys earlier, we, I'm sorry, let me back up here a sec. We also added that, and Chief Franklin had worked on this with the mayor when he was here, but anytime there's an officer-involved shooting, a in custody death, or any sort of critical incident, we will now notify the state police as soon as possible after that incident. We investigated our own shootings in the past, and this has already been a practice of us, we just decided to put it in writing. Alright, so it doesn't affect the way we do anything for now, that's what we've been doing anyway. And if we've already been doing it, we might as well put it in writing. And the other part of that was in the code of conduct, it's also very popular right now, that our officers not stand. that our officers not stand by while another officer is doing something that, uh, is considered excessive force, um, or, or misconduct of any sort. We already had in our code of conduct policy, a, we had, uh, a clause called, uh, duty to report. What we, what we did was to find a little more of what that ambiguous language was in there and we added that officers shall intervene to stop any officer from using excessive force. Intervention may be verbal or physical and that officer will then report that to a supervisor. So we wanted to clearly define that, um, no officer can stand by in his misconduct to stand by while somebody else is, is committing a, a bad act. Um, just so you guys know, do you have any questions about that? I believe that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any, any questions of Brett?
I have a procedural question.
Go ahead.
Um, I noticed that, uh, you're the sitting board of the most policy guy.
Yes.
Alright. Uh, what oversight do you have? Uh, is, does the council approve it?
The, we, these are drafts, of course. I sent you guys what we just drafted this week. The Civil Service Commission will actually approve these policies. These, these policies have been sent to the Civil Service Commission and we will get on their next agenda for the next meeting for approval, but we're giving them time to look at. But, uh, what we sending you right, uh, right now is, uh, drafts of what we come up with. Is there, is that your book?
Absolutely, thank you.
Uh, and Brett and I thought it was wise to update you and the public, uh, taking our practices and put them in writing so that they're there perfectly.
Right. If we're doing it anyway, we can write it down. It's no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I don't have a birthday gift.
Yes.
You can still air.
And, Mr. Mary?
Uh, yes. I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you, in department is doing. I've noticed on social media how you're, are doing, even the office, telling the back, being one of all that stuff. And I just think that's an awesome, you guys are all doing, and I just wanted to say, like.
We appreciate it very much and, um, glad that you noticed because they, you guys are working very hard and they're doing the best they can.
Yes, they're, they're doing a job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, that brings us to, uh, reappointment of Tan and Rupel to, uh, term to expire, uh, February oh-two, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, I talked to Mr. Rupel and, uh, he wants to continue.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion, the second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed, say nay. Okay, before we get to the next item, uh, I received a public comment that I'm gonna read. Uh, due to the most recent contraption involving Alderman Sykes, I would, I would like to request as a citizen of Jacksonville that Gary Sykes not be reappointed to this position. Any position involving the city or decisions that involve the city is admitted to disqualifying the funds involving the police department where he, he paid officers just because, should disqualify him. Thank you, Brandon Williams. Okay, so I read it now. Now we're out to the next, uh, reappointment of Councilmember Sykes. And just like I've told citizens, council members, we're not gonna let them call and we're not gonna backstand, so.
I'll move the reappointment.
Second.
And motion, second, for Councilmember Sykes. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any other votes?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. I'll say, alright. Now, that brings us to announcements. Do any of the council members have announcements they'd like to share? I just have one. Actually, I have two. Okay. Um, number one is, uh, Big Bang on the Range is on.
Yeah.
For July the fourth. We're not, we, uh, have you turned in your thing yet to the Health Department? So we're turning in plan to the Health Department, so it's going to be going on on July the fourth out at the shooting area. Alright, my other announcement is today, I issued a executive order. And in honor of, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but, but in honor of, uh, it took two years and a half for the President Abraham Amendment Proclamation issued in eighteen sixty-three to reach Texas. Uh, it is known as Juneteenth, the day that all Americans became free. And so today, I announce that July nineteenth, twenty twenty, will be known as Juneteenth Day and Jacksonville will be closed for business. Alright, do I have any more business to come for this council? Alright, appreciate y'all and I'll take a motion to a chair.
I feel so, I so moved.
Alright, we're chair.
I'd like to call the, uh, June eighteenth, twenty twenty Planning Commission meeting, uh, to order. And, uh, opening remarks, I'd just like to say that, uh, all the Planning Commissioners that are serving and, uh, on the board, I'm very proud of you guys and I want to say that, uh, I think you're doing an excellent job. So, uh, and I'm glad to have Commissioner Sykes back. Uh, he's very articulate and does an excellent job too, so. Again, you guys are doing.
I'm here.
Um, uh, let's see, at this time, we'll, we'll need to open a word prayer and we'll do roll call. How about that?
That's great.
Okay. Also, I'd rather bow before you, just want to praise you and thank you for just the awesome job that you are. Father, thank you for the love, the forgiveness, the compassion. Father, may we just continue to just reflect that out into the world that needs it so desperately today. Father, may we do your business, uh, the city business with your will and your way in our mind. Father, we just ask, in the name of the Son and Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I'm gonna call Roe. Commissioner Montgomery?
I do.
Councilmember Sykes?
Here.
Commissioner Hall?
Present.
Commissioner Britton? She's absent. Commissioner Twitty?
Here.
Commissioner Brown is absent. Commissioner Holden, did you make it on?
Britton, I'm here.
Thank you. Chairman, Mr. Out. You have to be.
Alright, so we have four of them. Okay, um, everybody just, uh, have you had time to take and look at your, uh, minutes from last meeting? Actually, we don't need to ask that question. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes from last meeting? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
Not second.
Take a motion, second, to accept the minutes as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? If there are none. Okay, let's move to the first item, uh, on the agenda tonight. That'd be for a public hearing. I'd like to open a public hearing. Bone. At, uh, six thirty-nine. Uh, is there anybody here to speak for the, uh, conditional use of one eleven oh-eight West Main Street, Suite B for Cosmetology, Cosmetology School in a C-two zone, Detective Jean and Mary Ellen Bowman? You're up, Gino.
Okay.
He's present.
Okay, go ahead and speak to it. Okay, you have anything positive to say about the, the conditional use you're asking for?
He must like it here, sir.
Why don't I hit the move queue button?
Can you hear me now?
There we go, alright.
Okay, I'm sorry. This is kinda new to me. But yes, I would like very much to get this approved. Uh, the lady actually, uh, has got a contractor lined up to do some, uh, remodeling to the building. Uh, she actually, uh, once I get a letter from you all saying that it's okay, uh, she's gonna start. She'd like to start Monday morning getting ready, get her school opened up by no later than August the first. Uh, and it, being a school, you know, Jacksonville High School and Junior High Schools used to be. I mean, you still have new schools within two blocks of my school today, I hope. And, uh, we've got, uh, of course, an insurance office in there. We've got a cricket office in there. And this would, uh, complete the little, uh, three offices, uh, building if, uh, y'all approve it. And if there's, uh, you know, there's, it, it, it's a nice quiet business, uh, and I need it. I spent some money. I made that building. It, it really improved, uh, I think, the appearance on Main Street. That area looks very nice. I tried to keep it clean. I put flower beds in, uh, I just need to lace that building for, uh, so we help me.
Okay, uh, is anybody else want to speak to the, uh, uh, conditional use permit?
Yeah, uh, Mark, this is William. Jean, uh, it says, uh, the max up to twenty-five. Is that her number or is that to square footage, up to maximum of twenty-five students?
Okay, Mark.
That was correct.
Alright, let's move on.
Twenty-five students. And, you know, she probably won't have that many, but she could have that many. She could have no more than that with a twenty-five hundred square foot building.
Okay. What about the flooring? This is Cosmetology School. Is there, um, there's some kind of flooring that needs to be, uh?
There is, man, it's brand new flooring. I just spent twenty grand on the inside of that building. And it is a vinyl flooring and it's been, everything has been approved by the Cosmetology Board with the exception of a letter on the summing of the building.
Okay, alright. Thank you, Jean.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Wade.
Alright, Commissioners, let's hold off a little bit on the, on the questions till we get anybody opposed, so. Uh, we've already had, uh, is there anybody else that wants to speak to the conditional use per, uh, permit? Okay, is there anybody that wants to speak against the conditional use permit? Okay, I'll close the public, uh, hearing at this time. And now Commissioners, if you have any questions for Mr. Bowman, uh, over this, uh, conditional use. Go ahead. Was that somebody who had a question? One Commissioner had a question?
No, that was me. I gave that stuff on the line.
Oh, uh, no, I just did, okay. Uh, alright, um, Commissioners, yeah, I do, I know, um, that you, you know, very well know that this is a C-two. Uh, it's asking for conditional use, but what's really interesting about it is that, uh, we have C-one district, um, that is designated primarily to provide for office space that I've used to protect existing offices and residential and concentrated commercial industrial areas. And underneath the permitted uses is schools, which it's amazing that we're, uh, what he's asking for is really trying to set it up as a C-one, which is to our advantage from what I see. So that's just my two cents on it. Um, is, is anybody else have any, uh, comments, Commissioners?
I agree with you.
Alright, then at this time, entertain a motion on the, uh, conditional use one-on-one, eleven oh-eight West Main Street, Suite B.
Motion accepted.
Sir?
I like it.
Alright, we have a motion, the second, to accept. Uh, alright Commissioners, all in favor, say aye.
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 Are, are there any opposed? Okay, so the motion carried. Let's see, let's move on to, uh, item number five, which is a request to approve plats. We talked about this last time we were here. And, uh, this is now the final plat that, um, come up in, uh, Jimmy, you wanna speak to that? Kinda give us a catch-up date on that?
I'd like to refer firstly representative of First Electric. Randy, you on the mic?
Yeah, yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay.
And, and first of all, I'd like to thank the Commissioners for allowing us to get on the agenda tonight. We had some issues with the original site plan with the, uh, with the, with the buyer. And at, at the last meeting, we talked about a common driveway that would be a shared driveway for the, for the buyer now and a potential shared driveway for, uh, a buyer of the remaining acreage that we own. Uh, after this, some due diligence on the driveway, there's some drainage that, that would be right in the middle of the proposed drive. And, and that, that drainage was installed, I'm not certain of the timeline, but probably twenty years ago. It was installed when First Electric still had our corporate office at the location over there. And it was kinda done for us and kinda done for the city. It, it actually drains the subdivision to the west. And, uh, we, we installed it with the understanding that, uh, we would probably build a, a, a corporate office on that particular piece of property. And it's, and you know, the face changed and, and it, we deemed it not to be large enough for the, the campus type office that we ended up with on JP Run Loop, so. Uh, the property's been vacant for all those years and, but, but, but the drainage is there. And, and it was right in the middle of this proposed driveway and I, I think the buyer was a little reluctant to, uh, to, uh, have the driveway, uh, in the same location with the drainage and have to deal with, uh, some concrete, uh, caps and pipes and, and they asked us if, if we would, uh, be willing to, uh, not do the shared driveway and let them have their own driveway and, uh, on their own side. And frankly, that was a good, that was really a good thing for us. We, we really didn't want to, I, I don't think it was ever our intention to, uh, to enter into an agreement where we would be, uh, saddled with maintenance on this driveway forever. And, uh, and after looking at it, we actually talked to the highway department officer and with the remaining profit is left, with the frontage, we have room for an additional driveway and meet their standard requirement for, uh, uh, distance between existing driveways. So I would argue that it won't be a problem. Uh, their, their requirement is a forty-foot separation between driveways and with the drainage that's there now, uh, that won't be a problem. They can, they can leave it where it is and we can, you know, if we sell the property later on, there's plenty of room to have a driveway between, uh, the property that we're selling now and then the auto mart store from south. So, uh, that's why we're back. They, they asked us if we would eliminate the track A from last, last month's meeting. Track A was the period that the common driveway was gonna be in, so. We're asking, asking for approval to, uh, revise the subdivision plan which would eliminate the common driveway, which was eliminating track A and then the new buyer would have a, uh, a separate driveway just for them. I believe you probably have a drawing of their proposed site plan. It shows the driveway on the south side of the property that they're proposing to purchase.
I don't think it got put in their, in their package.
Yeah, I, we just have, all we have is a final plat.
Yeah, I don't think that.
It's just a, no, it, it, it didn't have a driveway plan.
Okay, well, I'm, 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 I'm sorry that that didn't play place, but, uh, we, you know, they're gonna have to come to the city for a building permit.
That's correct.
You know, we, we've reached out, we've reached out to property and, uh, we've subdivided the property to meet their requirements for this commercial building. And I, I could tell you the driveway that's proposed, and at one time they proposed it on the north side, but there's, there's also another driveway up there from the barber shop and there's some drainage up there. So now they're proposing to put this driveway on the, near the south line. Uh, they have parking adjacent to the south line and parallel with the south line. So the, the radius of the, the new driveway will be about twenty foot, a little over twenty foot north of the south line. Now, but they do have a drawing that shows turning radiuses and they, they've done the study where they can get, um, tractor-trailer deliveries this side. So they got, they got the radiuses required for that. And what they will do is, uh, they'll have parking on the south side, parking on the east side and, uh, the loading, the loading area for the. and the loading area for the retail store will be on the south side of the building. And so the parking lot looks, I don't have dimensions on it, but it looks to be about twenty foot north of the south line of the property line where their driveway is stored. And of course, they'll be back to the city for a building permit. I guess you'll have a shot at looking at that when they do, but it looks like a pretty nice plan. The drawing they sent me does have adequate turning radiuses to get their delivery trucks in. Looks like they have seventeen spaces on the south side, seven spaces adjacent to the store on the south side, and another fifteen spaces on the east side, so. I'm certain they've done their due diligence on the requirements for parking for this side of the building. And they have another location in town, so it's not like they know what they're dealing with.
Yeah, well, it is, yeah, kind of, I mean, blindside one here, because this isn't what we talked about last week. So Jimmy, you're working with them over, do you have where the new driveway is, and then there's?
Yes, I do, it's the left side of the property, is what they recommended and are going to request when they come in for a building permit. This here is what, you know, the final plaque is just what you got in front of you. And I can understand their concerns about that common driveway over top of drainage pipe, which is very expensive. And if it goes out, that's tear up the whole roadway, replace it, repair it, that will eventually happen one day. That's why I didn't want it in the city either, want to take our responsibility. So the rest remaining of that property belongs to First Electric. They'll have to deal with trying to find the buyer for the rest, it's not going to be an issue with us, the city, as I can see. So I don't see a problem with it. As far as the driveway that's, that will be requested, they'll have to get a letter from the Highway Department showing they approve that, as well as tying to their drainage system, because that's also the state highway drainage system and state highway highway, so they'll have to get a permit through them as well for the roadway. But even though the state is forty foot, you know, we could be more stringent needed to on the next permit or final plaque.
All right, the problem with the drainage is they're going to have to build almost a bridge, it's a lot bigger.
It'll run right down the middle of the roadway, the one they had proposed when they submitted, the drainage system is right in the middle of that drive that they submitted.
Okay.
All the way down. And as you know, it's a metal pipe, and that drainage will need replaced one day. And they didn't want, my understanding, Randy, you corrected me from wrong, but you didn't want to, that company did not want to be responsible for that, and I understand that.
Well, you're exactly right, Jimmy, and, you know, we actually looked at, maybe we could relocate the drainage and remove it from that thirty-foot distance on track A. But the problem is, the Highway Department has a, they have a drop inlet, and that's why, that's why the pipe is where it is, is because they had to align this pipe with this drop inlet that the Highway Department has on First Street. So it would be almost impossible to move the alignment of that proposed drive. So, and really, First Electric, you know, we had some concern about long-term maintenance of that driveway also. So it's really in the best interest of all parties to try to eliminate that. And there's still room, there's still room for a driveway between this side and the advanced auto mart side. So we feel like that, you know, we can, because we're going to maintain that at least forty foot, y'all might want more, and forty foot will encompass the area where the drainage is, so that's not a problem. Nobody's going to want to do that anyway. And there's still room to put the driveway in, and frankly, I mean, I think, I'm not speaking for management at First Electric, but I think the intention would be to sell the remaining three acres or so to one buyer and just have one driveway for whatever's left.
I don't see a problem with that.
Okay, yeah, because that's a concern too, you know, possibility of three-way driveways, but what he's talking about is down the road, just one more driveway.
That's right, color, yeah, possibly could be.
Okay.
It could be to the south side of the property either, because nobody wants it on the north side because of the drainage.
All right, Commissioners, have any other questions, comment?
And there's not enough room for two tracks on the property that's left across First Street, because it wouldn't, it wouldn't meet your requirements for depth of, you know, your zoning requirements for depth. So there's only room for one more lot in there. And you only have one more lot on facing First Street, there's room for a driveway for the one lot. We feel like it's going to be a win-win for everyone.
Yeah, we didn't want to create a kind of a lot, because there's, that front lot, the next front lot left could cut off everybody else in the back, right, if we didn't give it all access?
Yeah, I'm having a little trouble hearing you, but there is enough room for access for the remaining property. Now, obviously, First Electric don't want to sell a piece of this four acres that will make it impossible to sell the remainder.
Right.
And we're confident that there's enough room left between the property we're selling now and the south boundary line to have a lot there and have access to the lot and have access to the property west of the remaining three acres west, so. We think we're going to be fine, and I know it meets the requirement from the Highway Department, because I did speak with the permit officer, and so I'm confident that we'll be all right with getting another driveway on the remainder.
All right. Okay, then Commissioners, entertain a motion. Unless you have any other questions.
Certainly.
Okay, and motion to?
Accept.
Accept, okay. All right, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion second to accept the final plaque as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is that also, Mark, is that also with the permit, with the permit Highway Department?
The, I think that's, from what I heard, he's already made sure that it's kept, it pertains, I mean, it's in line with the Highway Department. All things are taken care of.
Yes, sir, we wouldn't issue a permit until I got a letter from them showing such.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so all in favor, is there any opposed? Okay, hearing none, then the motion passed, so the final plaque's approved. And don't have anything else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hey, Mark, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is Stu and David on this conversation?
Yes.
He's signing your letter right now.
Okay, can I pick it up in the morning at nine o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Hey, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Oh.
And thank you guys for approving.
Why, Mr. Bowman? Why, I'm just reminded that we are actually closed tomorrow.
Okay.
So.
Yes, do you mind me?
Well, that lady wants to go to the Cosmetology Board tomorrow, that's, all I need is that letter. If there's any way I can come get it now.
Yes, we can have it outside waiting for you.
At the City Hall or where?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Huh?
Yes, sir.
I'm on my way, hey, thank you guys so much.
All right. Jerry, I need you to sign this letter.
All right, that better, Pedro expressed. Okay, so all in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Motion adjourned, or adjourned.